I call to order this meeting, meeting of the Coweta County Board of Education Agenda 8:36, 6:30 PM, April 1st, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring you recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
All right, and our very first one, we'll start with our core business. In a presentation from Madras Middle School, 8th grade, science. I'm going to call on Principal Herb Betts to make this introduction.
Good evening. I am Dr. Herbert Betts from Madras Middle School, proud principal there. Recognizing that the five-year Coweta County Strategic Plan emphasizes the measures and measures the importance of providing students with opportunities that foster creativity, innovation, and collaboration, along with problem-solving through real-world experiences. We at Madras Middle School have identified the need to give students meaningful, real-life learning experiences that encourage working together and thinking critically as a point and emphasis in our school permit plan for the 2024-2025 school year. As part of our focus in this area, we are engaging students in real-world problem-solving tasks that encourage hands-on learning, critical thinking, and teamwork in designing ping-pong ball catapults in our 8th grade physical science classrooms. Ms. Berry, one of our dedicated 8th grade science teachers, is here with several of our students this evening to share one example of the high-quality, engaging, and relevant work that is being produced by our students to help us accomplish this goal. Ms. Berry.
Hello. We recognize the importance of students being able to apply skills learned in class to real-world experiences. In 8th grade science, we try to focus on student-centered performance tasks. In order to master one of our standards in energy transformation and Newton's laws of motion, I provided the following learning activity for my students. The standards that are being addressed through this lesson are energy transformation of elastic potential energy to mechanical kinetic energy. The students also recognize the relationship between a catapult and Newton's laws of motion. We did this lesson in two parts. We first researched the engineering process, and the students learned what attitudes and characteristics help create successful engineers. Then, the students explored an engineering field of their choice and wrote a short synopsis of the career requirements and descriptions. Finally, the students were put into collaborative groups in order to solve a problem. I first showed them a clip from Apollo 13, which none of them had ever heard of or seen. The scene was square peg in a round hole, which is when the NASA guy throws all the stuff on the table and asks the engineers to solve the problem with the materials that the astronauts have in space. And this was just to relate problems that they were doing to real-world problems that exist for real engineers. The students were then issued a task of building a catapult to launch a ping-pong ball into a bucket from two meters away. The groups were given the same materials and had the same amount of time to build their innovative catapult through their engineering process. They were asked to research and brainstorm, collaborate on a design idea, and build their catapult. Then, students had a day to test and improve their catapult before official testing on the third day. After each group tested their design, they were asked to reflect together and respond to a writing prompt. The students wrote paragraphs explaining how the lesson related to their 8th grade physical standards, science standards, and how it related to real-world engineering. The students also reflected on their behaviors and group work to determine the best qualities for teamwork. Students also reflected on just good mannerisms for having success. We all had a really good time. We had a lot of fun and learned about having an open mind toward each other's ideas. The goal is to solve a problem with limited resources and to connect the lesson to real life through the engineering process.
Hi, my name is Keith Pratt from Ms. Berry's 3rd period physical science class. With this project, we had to engineer a catapult to launch a ping-pong ball into a bucket. First, though, we had to learn about some engineering jobs in the real world. Engineering jobs have to incorporate characteristics such as leadership, communication, and creativity. While some of our classroom catapults worked, others didn't, such as mine. Overall, this is an exciting experience, learning how to create and what qualities allow us to be successful engineers.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jacob Hill, and I am in Ms. Berry's 8th grade physical science class. In the engineering project, we use binder clips, popsicle sticks, and rubber bands to launch a ping-pong ball into a bucket from two meters. Labs are awesome ways to get hands-on experience learning about our standards. This project helped us to see the transformation of elastic potential energy and the kinetic energy. We also saw Newton's laws of motions through the resting ping-pong ball on our catapult. Then, we applied force in the opposite direction. We launched the ping-pong ball into motion and hoped it would land on the bucket.
Good evening. My name is Emma Kinchell, and I am in Ms. Berry's physical science class. The catapult activity was a lesson that taught us about engineering and problem-solving as a team. Each group had a set of supplies, including popsicle sticks, rubber bands, binder clips, paper clips, a spoon, and tape. We had two days to come up with a design to test on the third day. We had five tries to use the catapult to shoot the ball into the bucket. Building catapults is different from normal schoolwork, but we learn a lot.
Hello, my name is Elise Felsted, and I'm in Ms. Berry's 8th grade physical science class. This lesson has a significant real-world connection to how engineers go about their job on a daily basis. Engineers use teamwork to get their goals and ideas accomplished. This is also our mindset as we had to work together to figure out how to create a successful catapult. Engineers also need to persevere when working. Sometimes, engineers' ideas don't work the first, second, or third time, a concept that some of us became very familiar with in this lesson. Also, sometimes engineers are given limited supplies like we were and still have to be innovative in accomplishing their goals. In the real world, there isn't always a clear path to success.
Hello, my name is Leah Hayes, and I'm a part of Ms. Berry's 8th grade physical science class. We were tasked with an engineering project, which was to craft a catapult in order for it to launch a ping-pong ball into a bucket. We were given supplies, and we had to creatively use our minds to develop a strategy so the ping-pong ball could successfully land in the bucket. Our catapult ideas did not come easily, and we had to test what structures worked and what did not work. After many failed attempts, one can begin to doubt themselves and even consider giving up. My team and I did not let the doubt creep in, and instead, we tried numerous different options to try and get the ball in the bucket. Sometimes, we had a really good catapult built, and they performed perfectly, but when we tried to patch holes and fix it, it performed worse. Anyways, the show must go on. Let's see how our best prototype works.
They would like to see if any of you would like to test their prototype. You guys have to show them how to do it.
Our next recognition tonight points out academic excellence in our high schools because all three of our high schools, East Coweta, Noonan, and Northgate, have once again been named 2025 GADOE Advanced Placement Honors High Schools. And I'm going to ask all of our representatives from East Coweta, Noonan, and Northgate to come down, and Dr. Chase Puckett, our Director of Instruction and Gifted Education, or excuse me, Gifted Education, is going to go over this honor for us.
Good evening, board members. It is our privilege and pleasure once again to recognize the high-performing schools in Coweta County, and we are continuing to provide advanced opportunities for all students. Once again, Coweta County schools are represented as Advanced Placement Honor Schools. You'll remember that advanced placement courses are college-level courses that students can choose to take, and those courses also come with a very rigorous, internationally-normed exam. And if students do well on these exams, they can often receive college credit or advanced placement in the college level. Today, we are honored to celebrate the recognition of all three of our schools, and joining me today to represent their schools are from East Coweta High School, Assistant Principal Kristen Harris, Northgate High School Principal Dr. Ashley Wilks, and Noonan High School Principal Jamie Glover, who's off to a great start already, you can see tonight. First, we want to recognize East Coweta High School and Noonan High School. They were recognized for being AP Humanities Schools. AP Humanities Schools are schools that offer at least five exams, including ELA, social studies, two in that area, one fine arts course, and one world language course. So hats off to East Coweta and Noonan. They are also AP Humanities Achievement Schools. In addition to making all of these Humanities Advanced Placement courses available, over 50% of the students took the AP test and made a three or higher. I took at least one of these courses. I did not make a three or higher. These are phenomenal accomplishment of these students, staff members, and teachers. And today, we are also celebrating all three high schools have been recognized as AP STEM Schools. That means they are offering at least five different exams in the area of science, technology, engineering, or mathematics. All three of our high schools are also being recognized as AP STEM Achievement Schools. That means not only do they offer five STEM-related AP courses, 50% of the students taking those courses make a three or higher on those exams. So we want to say a special congratulations to all the faculty and students of these fine schools, and their fantastic leaders who continue to support advanced opportunities for all students. Thank you. And I know Dean's going to want your picture, so come right down here.
Congratulations to all. I'm going to ask Kristen Harris to actually stay with us because I get to call on you again, because we have a distinction for East Coweta High School tonight. The East Coweta High School rifle team is with us tonight, fresh from their state riflery championship, and I believe Major Merrill, state fresh from national competitions as well. So we'd like to introduce Kristen Harris from East Coweta High School, and Major Pete Merrill, Marine Corps JROTC, to introduce these students.
Well, Dean made my job really easy. I'm going to introduce Pete Merrill, the amazing Pete Merrill from East Coweta High School, and he's going to introduce these amazing students that represent East Coweta. They just took first place in the state rifle competition, and I believe third in the nation. So come on down, Pete.
I appreciate you all inviting us here tonight. Just a couple thank yous. First of all, to the school board. You don't have to have JROTCs in your schools, much less three of them. You sure as heck don't have to have rifle schools in your program. I'm from the north. We don't have, we deserve that. We don't have ROTCs or rifle programs. And I know, Dr. Horton, you know that it's not always easy to have the ROTCs in the rifle programs. I thought these meetings were all about, you know, coming up here, science fairs, but I actually watched a couple of the school board meetings, and you guys faced some flamethrowers. So I really appreciate, as a retired Marine, as a father, for you just believing in us and allowing us to do our job. I'd also like to say thank you to East Coweta, to Ms. Harris, to Mr. Allen, to Dr. Lanave. This year was a little bit harder. As you all know, some of the federal agencies are having some financial troubles right now, so going to the nationals and states was not easy. There was about six schools that didn't make it to Ohio. They just couldn't afford it. Every single time I went to the school, it wasn't a reason why we couldn't go. They came up with reasons why we were gonna go. And I'll tell you, when you're in that jam, juggling six glass plates, it's really good to have somebody who supports you, and somebody, when they speak to you, you actually believe what they're saying. So I thank you for all. The other thing, I'd like to thank the parents. I don't thank them enough. This is extremely, we have been shooting for 12 months. Some of these kids, before they started, they never picked up a rifle in their life, and that's actually a good thing. The parents, they let them go to the tournaments, they put the money out, they deal with the frustrations. And the biggest thing is they deal with me, having to choose. I have 10 very, very good shooters. We have two teams that could pretty much win any match they go into, and I have to make extremely difficult decisions about who's going today and who's not going today. So I really appreciate that support. When we got back from Ohio, so we shot Saturday at the states, 15th or whatever it was. We left on Thursday, we stayed Thursday night, we stayed Friday, we got up Saturday. The matches started. You go to the range at about 6:30 in the morning, you got to go through three relays. Came back chasing the tornadoes and got back. We were back Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they got back on flights and went up to Ohio to compete on the national level. It's changed a little bit. When I got back, we were exhausted, and everything kind of hits you. And, you know, I go from spending nights where it's like they never checked their NPA, you know, slamming the plate every time I put mashed potatoes on it, to then nine months later, you're choked up saying, I'm never going to forget these guys. And one parent called me out, and they said, "You always say that." And I looked at him, like, man, and I didn't have an answer. So I ran inside and shut the door because she didn't have an M key. And I didn't really have an idea for her, but that night, I got to thinking about it. I really could tell at the beginning of the year that these kids were special. Not individually, they're not friends. They're friendly, but they won't exchange Christmas. I think there's a notion of, we all got, but what they had, the uncanny ability to do, was despite wanting to win every match that they went into, they never let that get in front of the team. They never, it is hard shooting up there, man. I don't know, that's what they tell me because I've never been there. And it's amazing, their ability to put themselves together in good matches, to never put themselves in front of the team. We went up to Nashville this year. I didn't want to go. I never want to go. And they convinced me to go, and I knew right then it was a pretty special team. The way they could get along, the way they could bond. And I just would like to say there were some hardships in coaching this year. I had to kind of go ahead and use some jiu-jitsu. It was pretty easy. They basically dominated every match they went into, and we did not shoot well at states. It was our worst match of the season, and they still won by five points. So it's just a couple things. This is what they shoot at. And so for the first three years of my career as a coach, I thought hitting black was a 10. And then it was four years into it, because I can't see, there's a little tiny white dot in there, about the size of a pimple. And somebody told me, "That's a 10." And these guys join matches where, in standing, in kneeling, and prone, if you're not shooting all 10s, you're behind. And in standing, if you're shooting an eight, just pack it up, get the bus, we're going home, you know, we're done. And that's what they do. And it's funny, if I could, because I don't, it's not like I can call a timeout on lane 18 and bring them over and talk them through everything. But it's funny, because I have two types of species on the team. I have men, and I have women, and you have to handle them completely different. And for the women, you can tell when they're not shooting well. It's in their eyes. And let's say kneeling, they'll get up, and it's amazing, because they have this little tantrum. Nobody else can see it, but I've watched them in their habitat. And they will take their glove off and throw it against the chair like a Nolan Ryan fastball. It's like six ounces, but the kinetic energy knocks the chair over. And so I approach them, and for the females, you have to approach them so they can see you. And you got to have, trying to get your hands down, all right? And you go up there, and they glare at you, and then you put up a non-threatening posture. And it's the guns fall, it's the sights. I hit all 10s, of course, okay, I'm writing all that down. And then, so you talk to them, and then I know, they've never said this, but they want to say, "Hey, how about you get out here and try this once or twice?" You know, "You check your NPA, do this in practice. How about, I didn't think so. So why don't you go back and sit down next to my grandmother and have another cup of coffee?" So that, and they always did. They never, ever fell apart. Just great shooting. The guys are different. They're easier. The guys, it's just extreme negativity you bring into them. So they shoot poorly, they don't even realize it. And so you go up to them and quite simply say, "Wow, you can't shoot any worse than what you just did right there." So what we need to do is go ahead and realize it doesn't get worse, and it works. And I joke, I'm completely joking, well, mostly. But the ability for these guys to put themselves back together at very high situations is extremely impressive. But I'll be honest with you, we've had really good teams in the past, you know. We won the state championship. I've learned to really appreciate it. But no matter whether they would have won or not, these are incredible kids here tonight. Yeah, I could just be saying that, but I've been around, and these are good kids. How do I know? Because these are the kids that carried the flag to the football games. You know, Mr. Robertson, you've called all their names before. They park cars. They go to Special Olympics. And I don't think they do it for the good cause. They do it because they doing it together. And so, kind of in a world that gets crazy now and then, you know, it's hard to find good examples here and there, these kids are pretty amazing. And money was so tight this year that Mr. Carl McKnight called us, and every year, he has us come with ROTC instructors, and we go to the Hall of Fame game, and we scrape their plates. And I was kind of like, you know, there's going to be state champions there. You know, I'll be honest, some of the kids might have an issue scraping somebody else's plate. I need money. And I was amazed that these future state champions, number three in the nation, had the humility enough to go scrape a plate. And they had a great time doing it. And that's when I knew they were really, I mean, I could, you know, 13 years, Area 5 champion, 12 years, they've been in the top three every year in the state, six out of the last 10 years, they've been top three in the nation. And what they're really going to be remembered for is the times they went out for Toys for Tots. It's the times they went out to the Special Olympics. You know, so it's just, they're absolute, again, I kind of overask, they are very good friends. But I think it's their level of accountability, not just to me, but to themselves, but more importantly, to each other. And it was truly an honor to coach these guys. And I'm sorry to see all the kids go, but I still haven't quite figured out what is so special about this group. But just, yeah, very quickly, state champions, third- But just, yeah, very quickly, state champions, third in the nation, which is some ways more impressive. I mean, we're, how do you know you're third in the nation? Because we shot against the 20 best teams in the nation and came in third. It wasn't some random polling. And just, you know, and if you could ever come see these guys, they don't have the best gear. You know, I've had people come up to me and talk to me like, hey, when are you gonna buy new suits? Probably never. And so, so what they do is simply, simply impressive. And if I could take a moment, I would just like to bring them up here one at a time. It will probably take a second figuring out this flow up here, alright? But I'd like to introduce each one, one at a time. The first person I would like to introduce is Isabella Aliskas. She is a junior. Phew. She is a junior shooter. She shot 27th in the area. Come on, right over here. Alright? And she also qualified for the Marine Corps matches. Second, I'd like to introduce Diana Abaunza. Come on up. She shot 11th for the all-area team. She qualified for the Marine Corps matches as well as qualified for the nationals. Third, junior Daniel Wood, 10th all-area. Qualified for the Marine Corps and all-service matches. Next is sophomore Tristan McKnight. Tristan qualified for both, I think he was sixth all, all-area and also qualified for both the Marine Corps and all-service matches. Next is Ansley Adams, a sophomore. Kinda took me a while to figure out how good she really was. She ended up the season with a 290 average, which is pretty incredible for a first-year shooter. She got fourth team all-area and also shot like second or third in the Marine Corps matches and, and also got all-area. Next would be Matthew Hudson. He was one of our selections to all-state. I think he took fourth in the all-area. He qualified numerous times as an individual to go to the state tournament. So even if we had qualified it as a team, it would have been pretty painful because most of these guys would have been there as individuals. Next is Sebastian Abaunza. He is all-state as well, shot as an individual, individual qualifier, all-state and also third-team all-area. Last are my seniors. And one of them's been shooting for all of only a year. I told her she's all washed up, life's passed you by, kid, you gotta move on. And she's all-area. I mean, she's all-state. This was a pretty incredible group. Again, very competitive, but you go as your seniors go. And the first one I would like to introduce is Mackenzie Sukoo. She is a first-year shooter as a senior and won all-area and going up against kids that will be shooting on well into the NCAA. She became a distinguished shooter in like six months, which just, trust me, it's really impressive. And this all from a coach that kinda said, you know, I think, I think it's passed you by, so. Next, Leonardo Carcio Polo. I prayed his freshman year, he wouldn't come back for his sophomore year. But I will tell you, I could not have imagined my last four years without Leo by my side. If I needed something done now, I went to Leo. There was just, when we were at the hotel, the first day we flew to Ohio, I heard Aubrey grinding on Leo about something. And I'm like, please don't come in my room, and they came in my room. We had to downsize our guns, so we had to take our butt plates off and put them here just because we, we needed to get smaller. And it looks like Leo had taken off Aubrey's rear stock and butt plate and sights and placed them someplace else, but it looks like we forgot them back at the school. So, and then Aubrey is just reminding him the whole time. I think Leo then blamed Diana. And then that brought, brought the rest of the kids out. I remember literally going out, because it's like, be cool, act like you're in charge, literally going out like laughing, you know, because you can't believe it's about to happen and, and sharp chest pains down the side. And Leo goes, I'll figure it out. I'm not sure what he's gonna figure out, but Roger that. So I believed him. And I sat down and sure enough, five minutes later, problem solved. And, and I just appreciate everything that you and the other seniors have done for us and, and certainly be missed. Last but not least, my original captain and basically Aubrey Hancock, alright? She is a third-year shooter. Everybody needs a, this was a very new team, believe it or not, and, and Aubrey, she didn't carry us, but she gave us that example early on. You need, you need, you need one long ball hitter that can kinda put, put, put it up and shoot consistently and kinda get the team moving in the right, in a right direction. And I thank you for everything. I just, I just would like to thank these kids for all their hard work and dedication. Like I said, this started back in Ohio last July and these kids have just, they've, they've, they've given up weekends, they've given up proms, they've, they've, and, and, and they scraped plates. And, and never once did I have to ask them. And probably for the first time ever in any of my seasons, they were asking me. So I, I appreciate everybody, you know, recognizing us tonight, but more than anything, I appreciate these kids and everything that you stand for. And we wonder what's wrong with today's, I don't know what, because you're, you're the perfect example of what we have coming our way. Thank you for everything.
Trained him right, Dr. Horton.
You did. Parents, get all the pictures you would like. You're good, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all so much, we appreciate it. We have one last recognition tonight, we're getting on to that time of year, and that is from the Central Educational Center. For several years now, we have had, of course, actually for quite some time, we've had a great audio and video program at the Central Educational Center. Those students, many of them are here tonight and they have submitted work and been recognized by the National Academy of Television Arts and Science Southeast Student Production Awards. And to speak to that, I have the CEO of the Central Educational Center, Mark Whitlock, to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Dr. Horton, board members. Thank you on behalf of Principal Hap Hines, CTAE Supervisor and Assistant Principal, Dr. Monica Nelson. Thank you for recognizing one of the most successful high school programs in the southeast U.S. as recognized by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences and their Student Production Awards. This year, five Student Production Award nominations, two first-place awards, and we went head-to-head again against great competition like the Westminster School, Alpharetta High School, and so many others. Laura Horton has been there from the start. For a decade, Laura has helped to build this competition. Laura, we appreciate your work. I'm gonna introduce you, let you introduce everybody else.
Thank you. Good evening, yes. Over the past decade, CUC has proudly received 23 Student Production Awards. This is definitely a testament and the dedication and talent within our program. We have an incredible team here at CUC and they're committed to guiding our interns to reach their full potential and preparing them for success in the industry. Our outstanding team includes Ms. Diana Zito. She is our AVTF Intern Instructor. Ms. Beth Hawkins is the Director of Video and Technology and Film. Ms. Natalie Hinson is our Director of Graphic Arts. And Mr. Pat Patton, the Director of Audio and Recording. And with their expertise, our interns have the privilege of learning from the very best. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Zito and she is going to introduce the nominees and the winners.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Horton, and thank you, board and Dr. Horton, for having us tonight. First, I want to give a little bit of background. The National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences is a prestigious organization that hosts the Emmy Awards each year for national broadcast television programming as well as for regional broadcast programming. The Student Production Awards are the college and high school equivalent of the regional Emmys. It's a very big award ceremony in the industry and we're very proud to be a part of it. Our students competed against dozens of other schools, not just across the state, but across the southeast and by entering their best work that they completed during the calendar year. This year, our AVTF students at the Central Educational Center earned five nominations, three of those being in the individual and craft categories. The CUC earned nominations in the following categories. Nonfiction short form for our Eye Science Phase Change Frenzy, which I think was, yes, this is the, the production right here. And we were also nominated for the Best Magazine Program, which we entered our Eye Science Program for that category. And for the craft categories, I was particularly proud of our students for entering those and getting, earning nominations in those. Ms. Aubrey Hooper was nominated for Best Director. You may see her up here directing school board meetings once a month. And then for graphics and animation, Ms. Cassie Beachler earned a nomination. And for the photographer category, Mr. Ethan Bass was nominated for his camera work. Ethan, oh, they're all right here. Alright. And in the end, we brought home two wins in the categories of nonfiction short form for Eye Science. And I'm gonna put a little plug, that's my son, Luca, in there. He didn't come tonight. And Hawk made an appearance as well, Hawk Hawkins. So, and, which they're, you know, also part of Coweta County Schools. And we also, Ms. Cassie Beachler brought home a win for the graphics and animation category, which was, we were very proud to have the craft categories represented. We're incredibly proud of our students and the work that they continue to do to represent the Central Educational Center and Coweta County. And Ms. Hawkins and I are so excited to grow the program further and bring home more wins like this in the future. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Hawkins.
Hi, thanks for having us. Yes, like Ms. Zito said, we're super excited as a team, you know, for all these nominations and wins. As a new teacher and having just come from the industry, I've absolutely been charmed by all of these students. They have so much raw talent and passion for making movies and TV and it's just a pleasure to give them the opportunity to grow. Eye Science is the perfect show to facilitate that growth and such a perfect partnership for our program. Of course, none of this would have been possible without our amazing creator and talent, Dr. Donald White. He understands our goals, he's clear and patient with the students, and his input ensures that we're creating useful content for the high school students at CUC and Coweta students as a whole. And shows like Eye Science directly support our teachers in meeting classroom standards, so it's really a win for all. We're eager to work with more partners like Dr. White to increase CUC's impact on Coweta teachers, students, and our community as a whole. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hinson so she can give us special congratulations to her.
Hi, guys. I also wanted to say how proud I am of all these students getting recognized this evening, but I wanted to add a special congratulations to Cass. Because she has been a kind of student that is, not only deserves this amazing award, but she's an inspiration to all of us directors. And the way she interacts with the students around her, she's always helpful in any way, but she's so creative and her being a senior, we are gonna miss her so much, she is so talented. So, but yeah, congratulations to all. Thank you.
So again, thank you, couple of members of the team who couldn't be here tonight. Gail Butler, our Director of Work-Based Learning, does a tremendous job with these interns. I wanted to thank Dr. Chase Puckett for his support in, in this effort. Thank you for recognizing this team tonight. Thanks.
While Dean's getting you lined up, I've said it before, but I could never say it enough, Mr. Whitlock, Mr. Hines, what y'all lead over there and the people that came before you, I'm always in awe and proud and just so excited about what y'all do over at CUC every day. And it's certainly a, a, I think, one of the feathers in the Coweta County School Systems cap to, to have CUC and everything that goes on there.
Okay, done with recognitions. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 11th, 2025? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, action items, group one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I have for you in group one is to approve maximum class size resolution. Bringing maximum system class size averages are being presented to you for approval tonight. These class size averages reflect the same class size maximums that the district had in place for the 24-25 school year. So with that, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
The superintendent's recommended approval for the same class size averages that we've had for 24, for this particular school year, 24-25. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve a proposal from Elm Street Elementary for the purchase and installation of playground equipment by the PTO. Elm Street Elementary School requests approval for the purchase of materials and installation to replace old playground equipment for the school. Project will be funded by the Elm Street Elementary PTO. Total project cost for materials and installation is $31,181.2. Requirements of board policy, FEAE, have been met and supporting documents are attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent's recommended approval for Elm Street Elementary for the purchase of materials and installation to replace old playground equipment for a total price of $31,181.2. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to appoint an alternate delegate to represent us at the GSBA Delegate Assembly. In addition to appointing a delegate to serve as GSBA's Legislative Liaison Network as Coweta County's representative for the 2025 session of the Georgia General Assembly, an alternate delegate must be appointed in the event the primary delegate is unable to attend. Board members, I'll mention, it's my mistake, we did the delegate. We did the delegate a couple of months ago, and we forgot to present the alternate to you. So with that, I recommend that we nominate an alternate.
I'll open the floor for nominations. Just to remind you that I am the delegate for this year, so you can't pick me.
I nominate Larry Robertson.
Ms. Zito's nominated Mr. Robertson. Do we have any other nominations? Do I have to have a motion to close? Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve Mr. Robertson as the alternate delegate in case I can't make it for the GSBA Delegate Assembly this summer?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
The last item I have for you in group one is to approve a resolution for the Certificate of Completion for Noonan High School Bid Package Two. That's the gymnasium. Approval is requested to approve resolution for Certificate of Completion of the Board for Noonan High School Bid Package Two. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval for a resolution for the Certificate of Completion for Noonan High School Bid Package Number Two, which is the gymnasium. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, action items, none in group two, so we'll go on to action items for group three, trips.
I have a couple of trips for you tonight. The first one is a trip from Northgate High School. On March 17th, Dr. Ashley Wilkes, Principal of Northgate High School, requested permission for their winter guard to travel to Chattanooga, Tennessee on March 29th and 30th due to a change in their performance schedule. I went ahead and approved that request per board policy, IFCB, and I'm informing you tonight of that approval, per that policy. The next trip that we have in group three is a Noonan High School trip. Jamie Glover, the Principal of Noonan High School, requests permission for the chorus to travel to New York City for an educational musical on Thursday, February 12th through Sunday, February 15th of 2026. Students will miss one day of school. There is no cost to the school system. So, Mr. Chair, I do recommend approval of the Noonan High trip and informing you of the prior approval due to the schedule change there from Northgate.
The superintendent informed us of his approval because of timing for the Northgate Winter Guard for the trip to Chattanooga, and then has recommended approval for the Noonan High School Chorus to travel to New York City in February of next year, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Superintendent's report. Dr. Horton.
Call on Mr. Chapman to bring you your budget report, sales tax. Mr. Chapman.
Budget report, we're $72,668 over for the month. Through 75% of the year, we've expended 73.46% of the budget, so a little over percent and a half under at this point. Sales tax collection's just over 3.2 million. Our collections are basically flat at this point over the last year, so 0.12% over the prior year.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. I'll be bringing staff and student attendance tonight. For the seventh reporting period, the school with the highest staff attendance was Glanton Elementary School. The schools with the highest student attendance were Arbor Springs Elementary, Smoky Road Middle, and Noonan High School. The program with the highest student attendance was Central Educational Center. Board members, I do apologize. I didn't bring as much life to that as Dr. Guy. I should have said Noonan High School, home of the Cougars, so I apologize for that. For your board goal report tonight, I have a little bit different twist this month. Haskell Craver, City of Noonan Assistant City Manager, is going to come and present to you briefly on potential expansion of the Link Trail System in the area around Noonan High School. Mr. Craver, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Horton, Chairman Glover, members of the board, Dr. Kemp, members of the audience. As you said, you know, my name is Haskell Craver. I work for the city of Noonan. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the link. Hopefully, I don't have to explain to you what that is. Hopefully, if you've been on the link before, if you haven't, come with me. I'm a daily runner there, and I'd be happy to take you out on the link. You can insert the next slide. So the link doesn't stand for anything. It probably could, because there's Noonan and Coweta in there, but really, what it was designed to do through a master planning effort between Coweta County and the city of Noonan was to link or connect community centers, schools, such as the Nixon Center, Noonan Crossing Elementary, to Summer Grove, to Ashley Park, to downtown Noonan, to CJ Smith Park. And we have an ambitious plan to add, in total, 25 and a half miles throughout the community, if you would. Next slide, please. Sir, you can see behind me or in front of you, that is a master plan, right? So these, don't get married to these lines on the map, but these are generally show where the direction the Noonan City Council would like to take the link through our community. Unlike others, where you'll see the Belt Line or Carrollton's Green Belt that are a circle, this is not that. This is designed intentionally to link, as I said earlier, community centers. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about the link, right, and who we're trying to plan the link for, build the link for, it's not necessarily for that individual who's running 40, 50 miles a week or cycling 100 miles a week. While she or he may use the facility, and we invite them to, it's really for that folks in the orange, as you can see in that graph across the middle, right? It's the folks, the moms with strollers, the dads with strollers, people walking a pet, you know, those folks that may not run in the roadway, may not run on a normal sidewalk, you know? And we're not building it for those folks, you know, jokes on purpose here, who would never get out in the road and would never walk their dog or never be on the sidewalk, right? Really, we're building it for that sweet spot in the middle who want dedicated trail off the road in a safe place where they can, you know, enjoy leisure and connectivity through our community. Next slide, please, sir. To date, the city of Noonan has constructed Link Sections 1, 2, 3, 4. We had a partnership early on. A number of you were involved with that, and we thank you very much when we started the Noonan Center and Nixon Center. We bought that property together many, many years ago, and that was the first section of Link, connected Summer Grove out to Noonan Crossing Boulevard East. We called it our Model Mile. Frankly, it was so popular, we had to hurry up and build more trail thereafter. Since then, we've built an iconic bridge across I-85 that I don't know if any of you, if you ever leave our community and you go somewhere and you say where you're from, Noonan or Coweta County, and say, oh, I drove by that bridge, right? Yeah. So it's, I think, you know, it's kind of trend-setting, if you will. Then we've connected along McIntosh Parkway into the downtown through CJ Smith Park, across a boardwalk into our historic downtown. Well, as we look to the future, the Noonan City Council, as recent as last week, has decided it's time to take the trail west, if you would. To the next slide, please, sir. So what we call Section 13, and yes, I went to Georgia, so I am a liberal arts student, so my numbering may be off, right? We didn't go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right? We went 1, 2, 3, 4, 13. But joking aside, Section 13 actually takes a portion of existing sidewalk at the intersection of LaGrane Street, Boone, Cougar Way, which is what we now call it, and down along Noonan High School's football stadium, where you all know very well, I'm sure, there are no pedestrian facilities right now. I have a child who goes there. I park in that angled parking, and I get out holding my rosary real tight, walking on that side, walking up that driveway, right, and that's the street, so that, I'm joking, but, you know, anyhow. Oh, yeah, let's stay there, please, sir. No, go back one. So we'd like to, with your partnership, over time, develop Link facilities that run down the football stadium side, create a safe pedestrian way for folks not only who go to school there, who live in the community, who are attending athletic events or other community events, along Cougar Way down to the intersection, now the next slide, please, sir, at Sewell. And so as we come around Sewell and move towards Noonan Utilities Carl Miller Park, you see there's a big blue rectangle there. What that's showing, and I have handouts that show the same. I'll leave with Dr. Horton and Dr. Kemp. They can disseminate them afterwards, is a parking facility. That roadway down there, the right of way is very wide. You may be asking, well, why are we adding parking? You guys just added parking on Armory. Well, that's correct, but if you go back one slide, sir, when we orient and bring the link through and along Noonan High School's football stadium, or just the stadium there, we're actually suggesting that we turn those angled lots into parallel spaces. So in fact, that's a diet of parking spaces, if you will. So you may lose some spaces. So to the next slide again, so sorry to make you jog back and forth. We feel it appropriate to add those spaces back in a parking facility down here off the road, safe. We also feel it would be attractive for Noonan High School athletic events, a place for folks to gather before, after events there. And then, as you see, the trail would cross Sewell Road and get onto our property, you know, Noonan Utilities currently house the Carl Miller Park, if you would. The next slide, sir. That travels up along Sewell, next slide, off the road in a safe manner, and intersects with Spence Avenue, where it would then join another sidewalk section. So this would be a complete loop, if you would. So sidewalk at Spence, through Carl Miller Park, down along and adjacent to Noonan High School, up to LaGrane Street, interact there. And so I wanted to make you aware of this. I wanted you to know that the city council is very much in favor of this. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have, but we're very interested in finding a partner. We've always been partners. We see Noonan High School as a great opportunity to be another one of those connecting points for the link.
Mr. Craver, I went to Georgia Tech, so you could lost me on Section 13. I'm joking. I did get lost on the additional parking. Is that off of Cougar Way or off of Sewell?
If you would go back. It's on Sewell Road, sir.
Okay.
Yes. At the bottom of the softball field, I think that's correct.
Yes.
Below the softball field tennis courts in that general area.
Okay.
It's where we believe.
So it's on the school side of Sewell, not on the
Yes, sir.
The big gully side of Sewell.
That's right. Yes, sir. You're correct. On the school side. Yeah, the right of way there is so wide.
Okay.
We believe we can return some of the parking that may be lost when we convert from angled to parallel.
Okay.
And that, thank you, that parking lot, that proposed parking lot, is that owned by the city or is that owned by us?
That's a great question. The reason why I called out some of these areas in blue, as you saw through, those are portions of current school board, Board of Education property.
Yeah, I knew we owned a bunch of that back there. I just couldn't remember.
So that...
Yeah, I look forward to, I definitely look forward to reading your packet. I know we talked before, and so I look forward to reading your packet. That parking kind of worries me, just with that neighborhood back there. I've had some comments about it, but not that, but just, just after the tornado, the trees coming down, noise pollution, lights, etc. I mean, Dr. Horton knows. But no, I appreciate it, though. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Just from eyeballing, you know, just seeing this for the first time, one thing that worries me would be the parallel parking on Cougar Way.
Because I'm assuming, right?
I don't know if that would really work, but maybe it would.
Because Dr. Horton or Dr. Kemp, if you remember from your time as Noonan High School Principal, all of that, that was a joke, all of that is student parking right now, correct? At least it was when I was there.
Currently, yes, all of it's student parking.
Okay.
Board members, we'll mention to you, these conversations are very preliminary. The city council is interested in doing this. We bring this to you tonight as information. As we go forward, Mr. Cheek, Mr. Craver, myself, will have additional conversation. The first step is figuring out who owns what, and then we have to figure out how we can make any potential intergovernmental agreements work. So we'll definitely keep you updated as things progress. Mr. Craver, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Craver, thank you for being here. It's very interesting, and look forward to working with the city to, you know, to expand the Link system. I think it's great.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Last item I have for you tonight is the Facilities and Construction Report. Of course, you heard about closing out Bid Package Two on Noonan High School tonight, so we approved that resolution. Still a little bit to go on BP Three. Of course, with the size of that project, there's going to be punchless work there for a while for us. Northgate High School tennis courts, we'll get those repaired, that subgrade repaired over the summer. Preliminary design drawings have been submitted and approved by the DOE on the Central Educational Center. Final plans hopefully will be completed and approved next month by the DOE and hope to begin construction late summer, hopefully around the time school starts. Arnold Middle kitchen re-roof, contracts have been executed and planning completion of that over the summer. Some work has begun on our shield projects at our middle schools in the form of some electrical rough ends and wiring at Arnold Middle School and East Coweta Middle. We also intend to have those projects completed over the summer. Sewer upgrades at Eastside and Arnco Sargent, we'll get those. And color selections have already been completed for the floor covering on those projects as well. Get those done this summer. Still have some additional work to do on the renovations of the turf field at East Coweta High and Noonan High. They'll get those done. Going to begin those May 28th of 2025 and June 7th, respectively. And then some floor covering projects that we hope to do this summer, we'll put those bids out, or actually bids will be received, excuse me, April 15th for those projects at Noonan, Eastside, and Arnco. Any questions from anybody? If not, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Horton on the facilities? Okay. Every month at this time, we just set aside time for public comments. We did not have anyone sign up this month, but I do want to thank all of you that were here, especially parents that were here earlier, anyone else here, and all those watching online. Thank you for your attendance, and you can come join us in person. With that, I'll move on to board comments, or any general board comments tonight. Am I right? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.